So does the ball.
All right, welcome everybody. If you wish to speak during public comment portion of the meeting, please complete your request to speak card and turn it into certificated prior to the beginning of the meeting. As recommended, that you see president of a complaint with the appropriate city department by scheduling a meeting with a city council member or city staff before bringing manager or bringing the matter to city council. With that being said, hereby hereby call this meeting to order. Please stand for close look.
I am my bill of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for vicious hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a roll call, please.
May your be clear. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Counselor Prophet, here. Counselor Pedro, here. Counselor Salada, here. Counselor Quavis, present. Counselor Baumgartner, yeah. Counselor Rockwell.
Here.
All right, approval of minutes. Joint City Council Workshop with Planning Commission, June third, twenty twenty five.
I move to approve the minutes of June third, twenty twenty five, Joint City Council Workshop with Planning Commission as presented.
I'll second that.
Any counselor discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion to adjourn. All right, approval of minutes. City Council meeting, June third, twenty two.
I move to approve the minutes of June third, twenty twenty five, regular council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any counselor discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Financial report.
We have an overview for the period ending May thirty first, twenty twenty five. It was not anything extraordinary going on in May in terms of extra monies or extra expenses, except what we did receive from the Oregon State Long Term Enterprise Own Funds, one hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred sixty three dollars. So as long as the city is a sponsor on a press board and has a long term agreement with an industry, we get that payment every year. And it's all based on their formula. They just send us the money. There's no way to double check like, oh wait, you missed a dollar or something.
Where would I find that on here?
It's in the general fund.
So it's not a designated, you didn't designate?
Correct.
How much did you say?
One hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred sixty three. And that's only for municipalities. No, thank counties get it. State rules something. Our water fund, we've been looking at that one. Water usage has been a lot more than what we anticipated. So currently, we're about seventy six percent of what we thought everybody was going to utilize. Not because we had all this extra rain in the earlier months, or if it just hasn't gotten fine enough soon enough, people aren't watering. But we're just kind of keeping an eye on that and looking into a couple of other things, seeing why. But we did also look at our electricity, so how much is our pump using? And even that until a lot was less, so a lot of it is, there's just a lot less usage. But we're still looking at that. The garbage fund, however, everybody has like a ton of garbage because that one is extremely high. We had anticipated about seven hundred thousand dollars in expenses for the year. Then we did a supplemental budget to appropriate another five hundred fifty two thousand. And so combining both of those, we are currently at eighty two point six percent for a total of one million, thirty five thousand, and we got a couple more invoices before we're done with that. So garbage has been one that has really been busy. Nothing on the Congressional Community Project, which is the funds for the incubator building with B C D A. We haven't heard anything from them. And then we have our budgeted transfers. Nothing has changed. They were on there last month. I know we're happy to announce that we have new auditors. We did have four proposals come in when we put out our request for proposals. And our new auditors are Aldrich CPAs and Advisors LLP out of Salem. So we had one initial phone call with them and we're gonna be getting our prior audit information to them and we're gonna be getting, setting up for the actual audit. Because they're new and this firm is fairly good size, we will have an interim visit and then the actual audit visit. So two visits from them to get us all going. But we did the scoring of the proposals that we got. They were all very good and we're very excited to to land on Aldrich. They they scored a little bit higher than everyone else, so we're happy with that. Anybody have any questions?
Um, on the garbage, are you talking about like when you do the vouchers or is this like the individual?
This is the ninety gallon carts at your house. This is the the two yards at the businesses, all of all of that.
So is this, so by extra fees you're talking about like if they overfill?
I I well, but it also includes the big eleven, twenty two yard containers that the contractors use at construction sites. And so it's all of that. So it's all of it except for our garbage vouchers.
Okay.
Along with that, we have a basically one hundred sixty five thousand left over. Is that through your next payments expected to receive that? Are you doing every supplemental budget or?
No, we just time it. We wait till after July first.
And as far as the auditors go, when we bids for like instructors and stuff, we have to go with low bid. There isn't any holes with like we gotta go on a like the lowest bid for our auditors?
So not more requests or proposals. It's a little bit of a different process. And that's why we were able to use a scoring sheet, so we don't have to go with the lowest bid. But when we looked at all of them, there was there was two prices that we got from all of them because when we do the incubator building, we're gonna need what's called a single audit. An additional audit because those are federal funds. If we spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funds a year, we have to have a single audit. So that was included as one of the, we may need not this year, but possibly in the next two years. And so they gave us that breakout, what our audit costs, and then if they had to do a single audit, what that was. And it was funny, they went backwards. The one who had the highest price for the audit, the regular audit, had the lowest price for the single audit and the one who had the, you know, vice versa. And then when you added it together, they were all like within a thousand dollars of each other. So pricing wasn't a thing, an issue with these.
So the incubator building, been talking about that for a while. What is our? My understanding is that's a B C D A project, yes? So why are we tied to that?
Because we are the grant recipients and the C D A will be the sub recipient.
Gotcha.
So the single audit is for the recipient, which is us. So that is why we still have to keep tabs if they're spending it all correctly and that's part of being the grant recipient. We're responsible how the way the funds are spent.
So so are funds being spent on that now? My understanding is they got a grant a year and a half ago and a matching grant of some kind. It was in the newspaper. And so I guess my my point is, is how how long do we sit on that before something actually happens?
It has to be spent by, I believe it's either August or October of twenty twenty eight.
Okay.
So that's why I anticipate that we will need a single audit. If not next year, definitely the year after, because and this grant is strictly for construction, so they can't use it for the architect. They can't use it for anything else, strictly for construction.
And then where's that supposed to be built?
Over next to the old BMCC.
All right, moving on to formal proceedings. I very well might pronounce this wrong. Nutson Commercial Park Easement?
Newton.
Newton, alright.
It's okay.
Okay, okay. Public hearing, public hearing on Newton's commercial public easement vacation is called to order. Public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff report, public testimony in the following order. Any testimony has supported the action, any testimony opposing the action, any neutral testimony. Then we will close with public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard. Anyone unless the city council has a specific question. City council may ask questions of staff, after which the city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. City council may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time of a later date certain to the future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice at that time and date you will receive. Testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city clerk. I will recognize those people who wish to speak. Any questions should be addressed to me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium, as the hearing should be recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on action under consideration. Planning official Carla McLean will now present staff report.
Well, Brandon told me I had to be really short tonight, so hopefully you read the memo and I'm happy to answer any questions, but very briefly. This is on property that was sold. This was where the dog park and the parking lot is. It has been sold to Bob Doll. He is developing a hotel. Last Thursday, the planning commission did hear that. Their application was approved and they have a number of conditions to meet. As part of the purchase and sale agreement with him, the city did agree to vacate this internal easement. And I'm happy to go over the map to help you identify just which easement we're talking about. They also requested additional easements be vacated and then only went through site team. And the fire marshal requested additional fire hydrants on the backside of the property. They determined that they would rather leave those easements to allow public infrastructure to be placed in them and for the fire hydrants to be maintained as city infrastructure. So we're only vacating just the internal easement. So it's on the east side of one lot and the west side of the other lot, so it's the central lot line. You may be wondering why we're leaving the center lot line. Because Oregon revised statute, particularly the building division, now allows buildings to be built over a lot line. But to meet the setback requirements that we have in our development code, we're requiring a covenant of them, a covenant not to sell separately. So they wouldn't be able to sell one half of the property and have a hotel over the whole. So I'd probably give you more than you need to know, but I want you to understand the kind of context of everything that's happening. Happy to answer any questions. It's a pretty straightforward request. I'll leave it at that for now.
Is there any additional correspondence beyond those items included in the city council package?
No.
Right, public testimony. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the action? Hearing none, so which wish to speak against the action? Hearing none, does anyone have neutral testimony? If not, does the planning official wish to vouch for your vote or does he not? The public testimony portion of the hearing now withdraws. If this gets approved, when will they start? Will they?
So they still have some conditions to work through on their land use approval. Again, the planning commission approves site sign review. They have some conditions to meet and they still have to come back, do planning to get a bit of a development review permit. For all intents and purposes, it sounds as though they're gonna start construction this summer or in fall and be occupied by next summer.
Is it gonna be three stories?
Three stories. We actually have a, they they either gonna have to come back and get a variance or do a little bit of architectural work to reduce the height by two feet, one inch from what they proposed. But yeah, they're they're just moving along. As you have probably noticed, we moved sewer line. That is also attached to this project.
No, the road's still closed. We haven't noticed anything.
Well, I guess I come in every day on the freeway and I can see the work happen there. Yeah, I tell. So but yeah, that I think that has now, that work is now concluded or is nearly concluded. You should be open tomorrow on this flash. I understand this splash pad will be open for the fourth of July, so hallelujah. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing now. Natural hazard mitigation. Public hearing on Moore County Multi Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan is called to order. Public hearing this evening will conduct as follows. Staff report, public testimony in the following order. Any testimony has supported the action, any testimony opposing the action, any neutral testimony. Then we will close that public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard unless anyone unless the city council has a specific question. City council may ask questions of staff, after which city council will discuss the matter and make a decision. City council may make a final decision tonight or may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is continued, this will only, will be the only notice at that time and date you will receive. Testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out testimony form and submit it from city clerk. I will recognize those people who wish to speak. Any questions should be addressed to me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. As the hearing is being recorded, please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration. Planning official Carla McLean will now present the staff report.
Brandon, did you want to start with anything first? You shot my pocket in.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So this is the B three of this document. The original one was adopted in about two thousand six or seven. And then we had another one in two thousand sixteen. I say B because I feel very connected to this plan as a county plan. I was responsible for the first two versions. This version is not mine and I'll try to not say anything to mean about it. But this is it, five hundred and some odd pages. I know it was linked. I hope you didn't spend a lot of time reading it. And not because it's not important, but because it's, we don't need to make any changes to this. The county has adopted this. This is the county's multi jurisdictional natural hazards mitigation plan. A little background, when they kicked this process off, Wolf was still here initially in the role of special projects coordinator and then eventually project director. And he and I both attended a number of meetings as they started the process to update this. It does serve the entire county. So it is a countywide plan. It has a number of factors and features to it. It is a natural hazards mitigation plan, so it's not about manmade things. It's not about something blows up at the port or a train derails. This is about flooding and wildfires and windstorms and and volcanoes. So this is about natural disasters. The reason that counties have to adopt these and cities have been over time pulled more and more into this process is that Congress passed the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, I think. And it requires jurisdictions and particularly counties, and then again, they've expanded that over time to adopt these. And it has attached to it a carrot and the hammer. And the carrot is, if you have one of these, you're eligible to obtain certain grants through FEMA to do hazard mitigation. If you don't have one of these and you have a natural disaster, you could find yourself not eligible for post disaster relief funds. So there is benefit in having these. They do require that they're updated every five years. If you get close to that five year line and you engage in the update process, you're covered until your update is adopted. So we need to adopt this by August is kind of the timeline. The county adopted it in October or November. We have proposed, and it is in your packet, a city of Boardman annex. Initially, it was initially conceived that there would be city annexes in here and that each city would kind of have their own place. It kind of got watered down and placed throughout the document, so it's really hard to know what's important to Boardman in here. And then within that, there were a number of errors and omissions. And so what we have proposed as the six page, almost just a little over five page annex is not complete by any measure. But it begins to kind of pull together those things that in Boardman we probably want to say and reiterate. So what is before you tonight is kind of two things, and that's what, when you get to the adoption a little bit. You will be adopting this. This is already on the city's natural hazards plant page on this part of the planning department webpages. And so you'll be adopting this and then you'll be adopting the, that six page annex that's also provided in there. So happy to answer any questions you have. This is one of those frustrating things. It's kind of like, yeah, you have to. And I don't want to say it other than that.
You know, I guess I'd like to say because I read. I was in, I've been involved in this process.
Yes.
And I took the time to read probably to page one hundred and something last night. And
I watch you.
Oh, no, it's really nice. Oh, I mean, okay, all the graphs and the information about our our area, like like population and income and things like that. If you're vowing for a grant, this would be a great document for you to have at your disposal. And so I said to Mr. Hammond this morning that I thought that it ought to be a requirement for the city council every month to read like ten or twenty pages of it, only only to page one hundred, because after one hundred, it's all just same old bureaucratic stuff. But if you need to know about your local area, the the graphs and the information in there is really nicely done. And since they took Boardman totally out of it, yeah.
So this, so we ever had to use this? So this is through FEMA, I assume?
Right, it's a FEMA requirement.
So if we ever had to apply for a grant through FEMA, ever?
So I'm trying to remember. You know, one of the things I really appreciated when we started the process for this particular version, the emergency manager at the county at the time was a gentleman by the name of Paul Gray. And when I first met him, I'll be honest, I wasn't quite sure what to think. But by about the third meeting, it was like, this guy knows his stuff. And it's really too bad the county lost him. Because I think if he were still there, this valuable, because I think he understands that system way better than I do. I mean, yeah, I get it. You can apply for these mitigate mitigation grants, but it's just not something that, you know, at the county, we just didn't want to go there because when you apply for that type of grant, you it comes with all the strings that are attached. Now, there are some times when that's the kind of grant you want and you deal with the strings because it will fund something that you might not otherwise be able to figure out how to pay for. But I think the frustration is the strings that those federal grants come with. You have to, you have to pay a certain way or you have to add a certain thing to it when you do it. What I will say is that when we did the first one of these, some of you might remember that particular windstorm early May in two thousand and seven. And we were in the process of writing the plan at that particular time. And that's when there was a tornado that touched down at a three mile. Weather service would never acknowledge it was a tornado, but the damage that happened, you couldn't get there. If there was also one that touched down at the Lexington Airport, couldn't get to the analysis that was anything other than a tornado based on how things were mangled. But the other thing that happened with all that, that's also the day, this circle out here, not been here very long, it filled with water, like filled with water, and it did what it was supposed to do because it drained. And so for me, it kind of made some of those things real. But the other thing that we have that happened that day is we had what's the word I want, not gutters, culverts throughout the county that all but failed and some of them washed out. And so we generated a list of action items that's a requirement of this of all of the roads in the county that had culverts that weren't adequate. And then public works had that list and they worked from it. I mean, for the next three, four, five years, they worked from that list and just made improvements. Now, could we have gotten a grant for that? Probably, maybe. Did we? No. But those are the kinds of things. Lexington actually did get a grant based on the first one and they relocated their city hall. Because their original city hall was in a floodplain. And they they got a FEMA grant and they got a matching wild horse grant and they were able to relocate their city hall. And they have a really nice city hall now. You used to have to sit in city council meetings in the fire hall, but literally they pulled the fire truck out so you could sit in the fire hall to have your meetings. So big improvement for Lexington. So those are just some of the things that happened over the, I mean, again, this is version three.
Thank you. Is there additional correspondence beyond those items included in the council pack?
No.
Public testimony. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the action? Hearing none, does anyone wish to speak against the action? Hearing none, does anyone have any neutral testimony? Hearing none, probably don't need your vote. All right, the public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Hearing discussion, but it's a new question.
So I I have a question about the hand, that annex. Is that going to be something that is included in this? Or isn't too late to fit the annex into it?
Yeah, the county plan is adopted. It's done. We will submit our adopting ordinance and the attached annex to the county. And I don't know if we have to supply it to FEMA or DLCD, but we'll we'll figure that out. We're gonna provide everything to those that we need to provide it to. I think it will put the county on notice that we think that that the plan wasn't really adequate to what we had been told it would be. We, when you read the ordinance, you'll also notice that we have requested that they initiate the update much sooner than required. They have five years until they start the update. We think that because they did kind of drop the ball on the city parts of this, that they should start it sooner and we're requesting within the next two years. Now, I don't know if they will do that, but we're asking that.
Did they leave out all the cities or just the city of Boardman?
What's really interesting is what they're, it's not that we're not included. It's just been kind of dispersed throughout the plan. So if you want to know about Boardman, I mean, again, if you want to know about Boardman, you've got to thumb your way through or use the control F feature, you know, on the PDF to find where Boardman shows up. We were promised an annex, which is how the first two plans were identified. Each hazard had an annex and then each city had an annex. What's interesting is there's one particular place where they write up about the cities and Boardman has about half a page. Ericin has more than us, but Aaron doesn't know where it came from. But Lexington has like five pages. Again, it's just, it's inconsistent.
You think that's because Lexington actually applied for a grant at one time through FEMA?
No.
Or that they're in the, they were in the floodplain at one point?
We could just speculate.
Yeah, I mean, I can speculate. Their current, I don't know what position she holds as this, as a city official. I don't know. She's the mayor or a counselor. She used to be a county employee. Was involved with the process at the time. If if she was a county employee, I can make some assumptions, but I've already done.
Gotcha, okay. Absolutely. All right. Introduction, senior accountant.
Yes, so we would like to welcome to the city staff Myra Frigoso. She is a high, let's say high school, a Riverside graduate. She's Riverside graduate. She went to Gitchen, Oregon University. She's been here, you know, since two thousand and eight, so you know, good while as a family here. Again, I'm reminded, and I think, I don't know, I know Chief brings it up, but that concept of building within and we keep doing that and it is neat to see the the full circle when people are coming in and put all the time in and then these next steps. So truly a very good asset to the city. I don't know if Florida has anything else to add.
Well, very happy to have Myra. You know, we had lots of candidates that we interviewed.
Well, very happy to have, uh, Myra. Um, you know, we had lots of candidates that we interviewed and, um. We're fairly sure that, um, we did this scoring, we got the best one out of the group, so. Um, happy to have her along and we've got lots of work to do.
Alright, Chamber B C D report is in your packet for your review. Was there any questions or needs to touch, or anything? Sounds like enough.
Well, I guess I'd like to just address a little minute. Last meeting, we, uh. No changes, just because you're different.
I'll see, you're good.
That, that we normally have this, uh, I think someone questioned like. How do we know what we get for our money that we donate to the? Chamber of Commerce or we hire them to do certain work for us. And so this is the report. That they give us every month so that we know what they're doing for our community with the money that we, uh, are. Giving them that we collect from their own past.
For the tier start. Alright, ordinance five dash twenty twenty five. I'm gonna butcher it again, but. New from Commercial Park easement vacation. City manager Hammond, did you present it?
Um. Nothing more to add. Other than what was said. The one that was said just three minutes ago.
Uh, read by title and then ask what the title is. Is it just the point five?
So it's, it's right here in the. Time moves to approve the reading by title remaining of ordinance five dash twenty twenty five and ordinance vacated utility easement on the original plat of the Canute's and Commercial Park.
Uh, motion is second. Any counselor discussion? Hearing no, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Where are we? City manager Hammond will read by title.
Good. Uh, ordinance five dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance vacating a utility easement on the original plat of the Canute's and Commercial Park.
I'm moved, team doc, ordinance five down to twenty twenty five and ordinance vacated utility easement on the original path of the Canute's and Commercial Park.
Motion is second. Any counselor discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passed. Alright. Resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty five, road jurisdiction on Marine Drive.
So what this is in two thousand and eighteen, the council approved the action to. Like designate the road, correct? And then this is solidifying that to a next level. On the Marine Drive. Right, Curly?
Actually, in two thousand and eighteen nineteen, they didn't, nobody wanted to take action on Marine Drive.
Oh.
Um, but we did go through a process, the city and the county and the port to, um, clarify road jurisdiction throughout the port. Marine Drive was specifically not included in that because there was a lot of question who the road really belonged to. Um, fast forward, we're updating our T S P. Uh, they want us to do a road jurisdiction map in the T S P and Marine Drive is sitting there going, woo, woo, nobody knows. So I got the county public works director to confirm it is not a county road. Um, and then Jacob Kane and I, with a little assistance from public works director Drago and others, we kind of arm wrestled and. They said they would take from Port Drive to Ullman. If the city would take from Port Drive to Maine. And I guess we flipped the corner and agreed, quite and agreed on it. And this is just memorializing that. And we're trying to do it timely so that it can get captured correctly in the T S P.
So then from. Okay, from the port, whatever road, Port Drive to the.
To Ullman. This is the. The main.
Yes, to Maine.
Cause beyond Maine, it's unclear.
Okay, so then that gets to be core property and that's somebody else's problem.
Right, and there's, there's some real clear mapping that shows that Marine from Maine to Ullman exists in some capacity.
Right.
Now, the port still needs to, to actually do the mapping to realign the road where they rebuilt it with the rail overpass. Um, but, but we know where Marine Drive is.
Right.
Um, it's, it's unclear from Maine West in the park.
Okay.
And it's also unclear what kind of jurisdiction we have in that area. Based on the ownership. It's inside the city limits. But we've never zoned it and. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, then I'm into approved resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of fine jurisdiction on Marine Drive.
Motion is second. Any counselor discussion?
So it, this is just jurisdiction over the. Um, so what about the zoning?
So we still have to deal with zoning, but this is a road matter, not a zoning matter.
Um, cause it sounds like it's also a zoning.
It's really not a zoning matter, it's a transportation matter.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just. When you go from Main Street West, that the. Interestingly enough, the core property where the city has improvements has been zoned. It's not a zone that we really have in our development code. Um, but it's zoned as public open or it's open space or public space, something, but the park property is not zoned. So. Yeah, it's just, it's a funky zoning issue that we've identified and hope to resolve as we work through all of this planning stuff. But this is really just a road jurisdiction issue. Who does the road belong to? Who's responsible? Who will maintain?
Yeah, that's what it's really about.
What was that? And, and the.
I do the snow riddle.
Yeah, and the port is doing a comparable. Resolution, I believe at their July meeting. Um, I'll, I'll watch their agenda and make sure it happens, but. Um, we, we wrote, we wrote it for them so they could take action on it as well.
Just making sure this is from Maine to Port Drive.
Yeah.
We're claiming that.
We're claiming that.
You lost the fun more? Alright, we have a vote?
We do. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty five, verb rate increase.
Um, so last year when we approved the increased rate, part of that approval was to. Have an annual cost CPI and this is simply the CPI which was set at.
Three point oh six.
Three point oh six. And then that three point oh six is applied and it's all in the. Yeah, in the package.
So the three, three point oh six from year after year after year.
It. No, it changes every year. So CPI is the consumer price index. And it's hard to predict what it's going to be or control it because it has to do with everything that we all purchase and buy. Um, so if everybody starts buying more home goods, small electronics, um, that. Can skyrocket it versus if people sort of buy a bunch of houses. So there, there's just a lot of variables that go into it and the Fed said it, so it's the consumer price index. Inflation.
Uh, Kevin Miracle. Sanitary disposal he is on, if you have any questions for him. He was on, he is on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Good evening.
So I'm looking at the rate charge and so currently, so I want to make sure I'm correct. Currently. The city is charging twenty dollars and fifty four cents for the standard ninety gallon cart.
Yes.
And then we'll go to twenty one, twenty two.
Correct.
Well, that's not a huge increase, so, okay.
Mine's another gone rate chart, mine's an eighteen fifteen for one cart.
What are you saying?
You asked if she was reading the wrong rate chart.
That gives July one twenty twenty five, a weekly ninety gallon cart, one cart, eighteen dollars, eighteen cents currently. And then go up to eighteen dollars and seventy eight cents.
No, you are looking at the wrong one, Brenda. So she's talking about what the city charges. The one you're looking at is what sanitary disposal charges us.
Oh, my bad.
Yes.
So basically we tack on like three bucks.
Thirteen percent. Obviously cover postage for, in the postcard to bill.
And we do all of that.
Alright, we have most of those members.
I move your group resolution eighteen dash two thousand twenty five, a resolution introducing the race director for solid waste park from the city of Portland.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Which best? Resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty five. Natural hazard mitigation plan adoption.
As we just talked about, that is just the next step. We have, the county has already adopted those, we. Have a deadline to adopt ours, but then what's included is the annex that. Shared, so.
Making it a little bit more about Boardman.
Yeah, big clarity.
We're clarifying information about Boardman, so it's all concise.
I move your group resolution nineteen dash two thousand twenty five, a resolution adopting a two thousand twenty four moral funding, legal jurisdiction or natural hazard mitigation plan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Oliver.
Alright, resolution eight dash twenty twenty five. Interfund loan for land purchase.
So in, this is connected to the land over by Northeast Front Street. Um, in order to have the full purchase, we needed to do a loan of one point six million. So we need council approval to move that forward and then we'll close on July food.
I appreciate seeing the payment schedule for that. And the nice feature. Well, then I'm into approved sale of real estate property described as partition.
Flat number, we're on the resolution.
Resolution.
Sorry, I moved yet approved resolution nineteen, it's actually five twenty. A resolution. Now you're good.
Yeah.
I put the wrong, I, it's a typo.
Oh, thank you.
It's resolution twenty. I moved to approve resolution twenty dash twenty twenty five, a resolution proving an interfund loan for land purchase.
Any discussion?
Is that the total price of the land or is that just part of?
Just the part of it. The rest of it will come out of our budget.
The rest of it?
Comes out of our budget.
Okay.
What portion is coming out of our budget?
So the purchase price is three million sixty eight thousand. And, yeah, um, and one point six is what we had budgeted. Um, so we are going to utilize the full loan amount that we had budgeted of one point six and then the difference will come from our city funds. Plus closing costs.
Yeah.
And then this is an interfund loan from where?
Building Department.
What's our interest rate on?
One.
Cause we get to set the interest rate?
But you do have to pay interest.
Yes, we do.
Can we set it like a nine, like zero one?
About what you meant. You're paying yourself. You're paying yourself.
Exactly, a hundred percent. You're already fighting with other departments, so.
We can send it for anything, right?
Yes.
Do we like it set at one percent? Do you hear?
Yeah, the interest.
Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Most appears. Alright, land purchase, Tower Road.
Land sale.
Oh, land sale, Tower Road.
So this is the, um, this is the Tower Road property that we have, um. Originally, we were selling two thirds. Of the property below, it was the, all the land below the Kumsy, it was about two hundred and eighty acres. Um. That process has changed. Cause we were going to partition it, we have decided not to partition it and to sell the whole land to the same. Uh, buyer, so it's three hundred and six acres. And that price that they're offering is three million sixty seven thousand one hundred. Just to give some. So the original appraisal was at sixteen cents a square foot. We sold the two thirds of it for nineteen cents a square foot. And then we have now sold all of the property for twenty three cents a square foot. So we end up walking away with that. Like two point nine million when it comes to after closing costs.
Now, is this not in our packet that was sent out? Is this something that's been added?
This is verbal. It's not information that was included in writing.
So action item eleven. Is not in our packet?
No. There's no documentation.
Okay.
I'm moved to authorize city manager Hammond with necessary steps investigating the sale of the property described as. Four and twenty five E twelve lot four hundred. Period. Or the other one? Oh, the one, okay, sorry. I'm moved to approve the sale of real estate property described as partition plat number. Two thousand fourteen dash five of three oh six point seven one acres for the amount of. Three million sixty seven thousand one hundred dollars and authorize city manager Brandon Hammond to sign documents to, oh, sign documents for conveyance. Period.
I'll check them back. I do know. Yeah, good deal. Um. Three hundred and six acres. For three million sixty seven dollars.
Yep.
Looks like we just added zeros, which would be multiplied by ten instead of by twenty three. Or twenty three. Then I minus something.
Uh, so it's an acre, but square footage is a different number.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It's about, it's about almost ten thousand an acre.
Pretty close, it's right out to zero zero.
Uh, money from the sale, doesn't, doesn't make it go anywhere.
It is not. It's just, there are some thoughts and we'll have, we'll have a discussion about that.
I don't know, so general plan.
Correct. Yep, and then the say, the closing.
Engine.
The closing date is December second. And they will close sooner as soon as funds are totally available. They were waiting for this to take place. So.
Sorry. Somebody put information down wrong. Awesome. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. Both passes. Alright, so, public comments. Alright, public comment period, it's such a part of legal government, local government feeding. And our council strongly takes community and butted consideration. However, observance of ordered open meeting laws, this isn't time for dialogue, but rather time for us to listen to you. Our city manager will direct staff to follow up with you regarding your comments and questions. Anyone may speak on a topic other than a matter in litigation, adjudicated. Land use matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing out of earlier. Person has three minutes to speak. When your name is called, proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone. Begin by stating your name and address and then express your view or offer your suggestion in a courteous and concise manner. Remember to direct all remarks and questions to the council through the mayor. Uh, it is not appropriate to address the audience or the staff. So staff directly. Um, mayor is online, so if a question he'll come through meeting that. George Shireman.
George, I'm three sixteen, Borman Avenue Northwest. Uh, you just passed your natural hazard mitigation plan. I don't know how it fits in for a cooling station. Uh, last year. And I don't know the process of this, of having a cooling station. I know we, we're considered, we consider ourselves a cooling station at the rec center. And we will continue to do that. Um, last year, council, counselor bedroom gave a hundred dollars to buy waters. So we, we purchased waters for people that come into the uh rec center for that purpose. Um, and we'll continue to do that. Uh, we let them get showers. If they need to, we'll then with showers. Um, we have towels for them for that purpose. Uh, you know, with the heat index going up all the time right now. Um, we've, we've already had a few people come in uh requesting help in that sense. Um, but I want to make sure on the, for the city level that, that we're working. In collaboration on this effort. I, I don't know where this sits in the county plan. And I might go through five hundred pages of paperwork and find it.
Think you should, George.
I think it was on five forty three or something.
It is a moderate concern in that report.
I, I just want to let you guys be aware that we are redoing, doing that. And there's, there's plans for future um. In debtors, oil emergency services, uh, if we ever had to have an evaluation site. We want to make our site to be one where people could go to if they ever needed to. Thank you. Thank you.
Do we as a community have a list if somebody calls city hall and asks where a cooling station is? Do we know what we're, what we say?
We have a pretty good idea what we would say. We would reach around to most the churches. In the past, we've used library, library, so they won't do it anymore. Uh, there's several things that come into play. And George, I'll, I'll have a conversation because if they're going to be designated as a cooling. Uh, uh, shelter, then there's got to be somebody there twenty four hours a day. Which I don't know if you staff that twenty four hours a day, so. So like, there are several things that come.
Well, I just wondered like. If I really needed someplace to go. How would I even know?
There's quite a network of individuals that uh have conversations. And we get calls quite often, hey, is there a cooling shelter set up? Then we will do research and, and, and look around and see if we can find something. Um, most of the churches are really good to help out. Um. Uh, we've used the school in the past.
So in reality, the answer is no. And if I don't know enough to call the police department, I'm still going to be wondering.
Sure.
Is that a fair statement?
No, but. The people, the people who need those services usually.
Know people to find it. Right, you know who they are. Well.
They'll let us know. And we have contact with them enough. And my officers are out and about, you know, and, and, and they see that. If they see somebody who's out in hundred and three degree weather. They'll stop and say, hey, you need rides, you need anything, you know? There's contact made. Um, we, we, we've, we've tried to work with the county in the past. We've tried to work with the emergency manager. Um, the health department, um, you know, there's, there's several resources out there. It's just sometimes it's harder to find because there's a commitment. When you do the twenty four hour. Uh, uh, shelters, then somebody has to staff that twenty four hours and that's the major hurdle that we face.
Any other public testimony? That didn't get filled out already?
I, um, so one of the park ideas was to have some cooling stations throughout parks. And four along the misters, along sidewalks. And um, I know there's a fountain in front of the library. Um, but I was going to ask chief a question. So. Over the last number of years, there's always this one little car that parks over by the splash pad. And I believe somebody's sleeping during the day. With the shades in the windows, you know? But then there's a couple of people who park underneath the few little spindly trees at the safe center as well. Are you able to go onto the safe center and check those people or is that private, considered private property and not?
We can go on. It's, it's, it's part of property open to the public. So in, in, in when we get calls or if we go check on them, we go.
Okay. I was just curious because I think that people are sleeping in their vehicles during the heat of the day in those conditions.
That was our public comment. Thank you, timer, for that. All right, so reports correspond from discussion. Uh, we're going to move committees up to the top. So we're housing advisory committee.
Good evening, everyone. Carter Rosales, seven to five, Oxford Road, uh, unit fourteen. So, um, the advisory committee, we just started meeting about two months ago. We've only had, um, two meetings so far. We're really just focused on. Um, kind of getting a direction of this committee, seeing what's the best way to manage and use these funds. Um, make it last, to be honest. So, um, it's really been a lot of informational partnering with the missing middle housing fund. Um, they've been so far great partners, giving us great information, showing some kind of pain points of Borden. Um, seeing what we can improve on and then to make board a great community. Um, we ended the last meeting with, um, then recommending, um, to really focus on our systematic issues such as. You know, maybe getting more information on zoning, um, streamlining the process to get permits. And they're working with a similar committee out of Newbury and they're going to come back next week and give us some recommendations to see what worked for them. Potentially what could work for us here in Portland. So, um, that's our next step. Really focus on the system and just making streamlined, streamlined to get. Best information to the, to people wanting to move here and live in Portland. So, other than that, we're just kind of starting out. But we got a great group excited to really make a change and improve in Portland. And the most important thing is everyone wants action. We're not trying to sit on this and, and just keep talking. So that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can just piggyback that, so that brings up a question. Of now that there is a possibility of spending funds. How does the council, because again, the, the council appointed the committee, the committee, you know. Goes back to you guys. How do you want them to get permission to spend money? So there are, like, uh, Ricardo was saying, there's, there is a possibility. Um, that possibility is around, uh, it won't be over twenty thousand. It's going to be under twenty thousand. Dollars to do that streamlined planning. Um, there is another concept that was talked about and that's developing like a master plan. And Carter would know more than, like, what that means, but it's like, what do you put in this specific area? Um, that cost is a little bit more. When I talked to Nathan Wildfire, he said it would be around a hundred thousand. But the goal would be to let, like, have, the city would pay for this. And then we would go and ask, uh, businesses to then kick in because it, it would benefit them greatly to have this master plan throughout the city. And, and have them have some input on how this unfolded. So maybe the city would say, hey, we'll pay. Fifty, forty thousand of it and we're asking you guys to kick in five or ten or whatever, going to different businesses. Uh, any thoughts on how you guys would like to see a simple for spending?
So are you, so to some clear, you're asking. The committee or Nathan or whoever's in charge or whatever comes and asks every time they're going to spend money and what it's going to be for and it'll have detail and. Things like that, or are we just giving them permission and just do whatever?
No, no.
That's, so that's what we're trying to clarify right now. If, if progress on asking for funds.
Correct. Right now, the committee would get together. They would have a, a chair, which Ricardo did great. So, so Ricardo comes every time. Does, you know, these huge elaborate presentations and. So you would have a representative come and say, hey, we've talked about this. Here's some information. It's going to cost blah, blah, blah. Is that how you'd like it?
So we would have a paper trail and we would know how our money is getting spent because it is public dollars and. And so if anybody asks, we can say.
Ricardo decided. Well, I, to, to add to that though, what, um, because everything is, is going to be audited. Right? Like, there's going to be a paper trail there. Uh, we're going to know exactly where the, the funds are going to go. But as far as the committee members, do, do they feel comfortable taking on that responsibility of, you know, if they make a decision? And, and there's people in town that are very opposed to it or feel like that was a horrible idea. Um, you know, that they're going to be okay with that.
Yeah, well, I think in the end, the committee decides, correct?
No, they are an advisory committee. You guys have the fun sense. The, the first.
But that's what I'm saying is the advisory committee is the ones that would formally ask. And then the council would be the ones that where we say yes or no.
If that's.
If that's how we want to do it.
Well, okay, I think, I think this is broader than perhaps we're acting in. I think we have to start and decide if this is going to be a grant program or a loan. So, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork that, I don't know whether wildfire is going to do it or what. But there's a lot of decisions to be made from the city council. You know, we said we'd set aside a million dollars. And so are you going to set aside fifty thousand as grant money? And then we'll say that, you know, the first two or three developers that come and want a grant. If they do the, fill out the boxes the right that we think they ought to fill out. Okay, we'll give you that to start. Are you going to just say, well, no, you know, we'll, we'll do a deal where we'll. Upfront, you know, say a hundred thousand. Then when you sell your, your first house or whatever you developed, we agreed to. That then you'll pay us back out of your proceeds. I mean, this is a. I don't know.
Well, and there's different, so you're talking about a, a different concept, right? Cause this.
I'm talking about a million dollars.
But the one idea of doing like this twenty thousand planning, I don't think it'd be, it's not a grant.
Oh, no, I'm talking about that money.
So yeah, I think it would be a mixture, like, oh, there are something, things that's like, hey, this is an investment. We're not getting anything back. But yeah, obviously we want the, it to be. Correct.
So who's going to decide that?
That's who we're talking about.
You and Christina and Ethan and me, Richard.
Well, I, so.
I mean, I think that the committee, we serve on a committee. So I think the committee is going to come up with the ideas. We're going to use the best information that Nathan can provide, that we know about our town. Generate what we think would be a good fit for the whole community. And that is maybe not your traditional stick build. Or try to do the zoning or try to do the build of the lands, master plan or whatever that is. And, but we can't spend any of the money on those ideas until this council says it's okay to do so.
Yeah, so I'm wondering when we might get around to that.
If we decide.
Correct, if you do decide.
Right, because it's kind of like when we're deciding on Brandon and, and his ability to spend. You know, are we capping that like anything above twenty has to go through us or, you know, below?
Yes, exactly. Right, given right now the preferer policy, you guys have allowed me to spend no more than a hundred and twenty five. Unless it's all in the budget, but if it's over a hundred and twenty five, I come and ask for permission. So that is like, and the other question is, do, do you just want it to all come to you, nothing through me? So anything that they want to spend, it really goes to the council. It doesn't come and, oh, I have so much, you know, leeway. Are you wanting a hundred percent of it? Probably the easiest question is like, do you guys want all the authority? It was great.
I think the, probably the problem with that would be, not that I'm against that, but it would be the timing of it, you know? We only meet once a month.
And, and, and yeah, and.
Maybe something needs to get done. And the problem with that is then it just gets drug on and drug on. That's why government moves so slow.
I mean, to be prepared, and again, this is just started and some of the projects will take forever anyway. For it to go, that they really will have all that time. I, I mean, of, the one thought that I had is, okay, so here's this opportunity. To, they're going to meet next week. It's not official, but the possibility of spending something on this planning. Whatever, that sounds way cool. I mean, they showed me an example like, did you, like, you click on it? And it gives you all the information about that, the zoning, what you have to do and, and the steps to develop it. I mean, it is, that's neat. And that's like.
AI on steroids.
Kind of like that. And they set it up and it, it is an annual fee, but the setup is, it's less than twenty because it's based on how many lots you have. Or there's a, is that what?
Yeah, I, I apologize. I missed the last meeting. I had a conflict, but. Yeah, Nathan and I talked about it a little bit, but I'm looking forward to the next meeting to get a better understanding myself.
Uh, on that note, chief has the report.
The mayor, uh, in, in his comments said the buck stops with the council. I believe the committee comes and requests the funds to be approved.
All right, personally, I would like to see it done that way. They can come up with everything, bring it to us and they'll prove it or not. That, that's my feeling, partner.
Well, I think with the amount of money, it's a responsible way to do it, you're saying.
That's my, my other question is, like, like the twenty thousand that they want then. To build this or get this together. Where, where is that money coming from? Does that come from our city budget or is that coming out of the million dollar?
Everything that he asked for will come in.
They get anything, it will be from the businesses that will go in there and that's what everybody says off.
I like the idea of the committee coming up with, kind of what Karen was talking about. They, to get this money, we're going to have to develop a grant process. However you want, a lending, a loan process, whatever you want to come up with, but I think the committee should come up with that. Give it to us and say, yeah, you made it. You like this, right? It's kind of my thought.
And it could be a combination of grants and bonds.
Oh, yeah, no worries. I'd like to see the committee come up with that. So like this is how we order.
And that's, that's the easiest way. So the committee is going to come up, they're going to present to you guys about spending money. Is there any interest in allowing them to go board with this twenty thousand if they so approve? Cause that's their meeting next week. You guys aren't going to be till August, just a thought.
My, my thought was, um, when you threw out the option of, um, them being able to, to take these to you. That if it was less than five thousand, then they could just go to you versus the council and anything above twenty thousand, that it would, it would need to go to the council.
Well, and I think the other thing too, I mean, if it was more or whatever, it's not like you're just going to not say anything. You inform us and let us know. And then if we have questions, we're going to be like, eh, or yeah, that's, you know, go ahead.
Cause they definitely will have more information about the master planning concept. And I really, I don't know all of it. All I know is that, and Nathan's really good at the concept. He's like, Brandon, we're not, like, you guys don't have an endless supply of money like Carter believes. And how she spends it. So pulling her back is.
Unholy supply.
Yeah, but what he said is really leveraging and getting more people to buy in. And that master planning is a classic example, like, hey, city's going to go do this. But we need you guys to put in at least this, this and go to all these businesses and, but again, that's just trying to, for the leverage.
So on the twenty thousand myself, can you describe what that's actually for? Like, I. Right now, it's just, hey, there's, we want twenty thousand to go do this, but what are we doing?
Yeah, as I understand it, it's a, it's, it's basically in. And I, I don't know how to describe it because I don't get how AI works. Frankly, I think Sky and that's real, but, um. It's an AI reader.
It's an AI reader, and so it looks at our development code. It looks at our zoning map. It looks at those documents that we have. And you you query it. And then it's able to tell you if you wanna build a house in this zone, these are the permits you have to gather.
It speeds up the process.
It speeds up the.
And it makes it more efficient.
So in places like Portland, you might wait a year and a half for somebody to get through the planning commission side. And explain to you what zones and rules you have to hit. Now in Boardman, it's not nearly like that. However. As we heard at the joint planning commission meeting. There are people who've wanted to know things who've been stymied by our rules, like it's just cumbersome. And this would take the cumbersome side out of it. So it's it essentially takes that information and puts it into a single document that. I wanna build a six foot fence on lot block. It's X Y Z. And it's located in this area. Well, it'll come back. You can't. That's commercial. You can't have six foot fence. Or if you can, that but you have to do it this way. It has to have this many setbacks. And so to have that information clearly delineated for the builder or the builder.
So then we purchased some AI program for the city a little while ago.
Didn't.
Or we got.
No.
It was ready for the website.
Yes, for the website and they pulled out.
Oh, man.
They lost it, I mean.
Homer.
Well, I know.
Well, then it seems to me like that what we're here today to say is. I will. As a city council, we can allow the committee to spend up to forty thousand. Off at their discretion on this because. I guess I'm a little concerned about how much information the city council is gonna have. If Brandon's talking all the time to wildfire. Whatever, isn't that his name?
He is Nathan.
Fire. Yeah, I only worry about.
You're getting by his last name.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with fire. But it just seems like. So next month, we can come back and we can say to you, well, okay. We're still trying to decide. Uh. If we're gonna waive the SDC charges or we'll pay them in lieu of you, so then I can come and have that discussion with you guys so you know where we're at. I guess that's. Is that what you're saying?
No, it really should be. It it really should be the advisory committee advising the council. And if you're, yes, absolutely. And Nathan, which is hitting heads up on that, he's gonna share, because I won't go to those meetings. It it really is the committee is set there to do a certain work. I don't wanna impede that. Um at all an influence, but yeah, that is the concept.
We're gonna go to chief real quick here.
The mayor uh says that all funds should be spent or excuse me, all funds spent should be approved by the council. I'm not in favor of allowing the committee to spend without approval of the council. The committee does not answer to the community. We do. The community would need to have their meaning before ours in order to request funds.
Correct.
So that's one person's opinion.
Yeah.
That that's my opinion as well.
And.
Karen stated earlier.
Okay.
I'd like to see them come to us, ask, ask for it, so having their meeting before ours makes sense. So that they can have their ducks in a row.
If there was something that they needed. Did? That we needed right away, could we have a special? Meeting in order to prove that?
Yeah.
So we could do that. So say. Cause we we meet next week. We could get it, you know, the all our ducks in a row and then request a special meeting the following week.
You have to advertise.
For two weeks, right? Is it two weeks? You gotta advertise it?
Forty.
For a special meeting.
I think it's forty eight. Yeah.
Just because you would, like you said, you'd have to wait another month. Before you could even report on anything.
And the only the only thing that really is. Like truly on the table, that's if the advisory committee approves it, is that planning. That's the only thing. I have no idea the details of the map, because that master planning is gonna be a little more. Uh. Time. This other one is just more of a low hanging fruit. What do you guys think? So, but that totally up to you guys.
Question here on the AI. Is that? Gonna pick on you for just started. Is that to make your job easier? So that you don't have to go look through documents?
So it allows the public an uh uh an entry into the inquiry. That is not staffed. By us. I mean, it's. Is it making our job easier? Maybe. But we also have to be doing some level of QA on the information that this is spitting out. So, I mean, I hope it's correct, but I think time will tell. I do think that it could help us better understand where our code is insufficient or inadequate. When it when it when it comes back with, well, I don't really know, because the code's confusing. Yeah, I get that. I agree. So I I think there is. I guess. Commissioners law uh council's law to, for me, in some respects, is a little bit of a double edged sword. I think there is a real benefit to the user public. Now, for the contractor who's building a house and it's the fourteenth house he's built, he doesn't need to ask that question. But for the person who's coming to town for the first time and they're thinking about doing some level of commercial or industrial development, I think it could be a very valuable tool. But therein lies where some of my questions are also. What how accurate will it be? And I think for us, it's about truth checking that at the same time. So that that's what I say. It's a little bit of a double edged sword, but I I'm incredibly intrigued about it. This topic came up well over a year ago, not long after, well, as part of the build. Bill Boardman.
Yeah.
Event, this conversation started. And um I have been intrigued by it. Um frankly, um we're just so so at capacity. To think about some of this additional stuff. It's kind of nice to have somebody else thinking about this additional stuff and figuring out maybe something implemented.
So let me ask you this, if. In the future, if somebody came in and said, hey, I wanna build. X Y Z here. Chat or the AI. Said, this is your codes, blah, 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 blah. They went with it. And started to go, and I don't I don't know if this is how this works or not.
No. It wouldn't be. You you would still have to get.
You still have to go through the permit.
That's what I was hearing.
Yeah. Yes.
But so they're gonna come to you and say, this is what AI told me. And you're gonna be like, well, this is what it actually says.
Yeah.
Right, and that's the truth checking that I think needs to happen.
AI piece that'll say, not all like, you know, I mean, just like if you look up something right now on AI. It says right there, AI makes mistakes. And you have to know that when you use a system like that.
Right, right. And so, no, it doesn't, it doesn't, um it doesn't provide approvals. It simply provides the roadmap.
And promote.
For the application and right, what's necessary and what's needed, what is allowable, what's not allowable, what's needed to apply. I think the other piece of it is that um there might be from the housing committee side. There might be some desire to do. Housing that's not traditional in the sense that it's not made with wood and nails or wooden screw. But they're using some other type of fabricated materials.
Mm hmm.
And or they're trying to determine if they can do cottage clusters or something like that. And our zoning might not be allowing for that. But this. System is supposed to also support the city on the flip side. To help them figure out if there's a way to make something like that available in our buildable lands. Which is part of what the master plan is to help with as well.
Mm hmm.
But the AI is a, I I'm calling it AI than what else to call it.
Yeah.
And they've done it in a couple of other cities in Oregon, so they're feeling pretty successful with it in much bigger cities like Plaquemines or.
Newburgh.
Newburgh, thank you. Bigger bigger metropolitan areas are using it and finding a great deal of success.
So, I'm sorry.
Getting back on track um to whether or not we're gonna allow um. Uh, I just wanted to to comment on Kiefer's uh mayor Kiefer's comment. Um, we do, we are the ones that um. The community will come to. We are the ones that will have to respond, but we also approve the committee. Um, and that was essentially what we are entrusting them to do is to work on this. And I. And I personally feel like I don't need to micromanage the smaller amount. When they're not gonna be doing it on their own, if they're still going to you to say, hey, we need a, you know, three thousand for this. Versus waiting for us. I do think that the larger ones are when they're looking at, here's what we wanna do. In building these unique structures or whatever that that is gonna come to us. That those are the things that then would come back to the committee for approval. That was my thought.
And and it'll be all that really is the the purpose of this discussion is how do you want the spending? Needs to be, that's whether we do the planning or whatever, that's.
So then she just mentioned something like that question or. Uh, she said that they will come back to you. To ask for follow up money. Is Nathan not in charge of that, Nick? You know?
No, we are. The city is.
Okay, but Nathan was oversight on.
No, we changed that.
Okay.
Ethan.
Uh, we got a hand up from there.
Hey, um, I'm I enjoyed the discussion because I I'm glad the uh micromanagement came up because. I was really kind of stuck on that one as well. I was, I, you know, I. Should we allow a certain amount of money so the committee could be spent? I was really kind of. Pulling on both ends because. What if? The committee spent it on something we didn't like or we didn't. Uh, approve of or whatever, and that's the only part I was struggling with, and that's kind of why I was stuck on. Hey, they can, if they want money, they need to just pre come and present it and then. We are always in the loop and we don't have to wait for Mr. Hammond because it's not his project. It's our project with the community. So, I mean, I could probably live with, you know. Granting a certain amount of money, but I I just think if we go with, no, to start with. No, we're just gonna grant. You gotta come and request it from us, just like you're trying to request it from the government. Um, but I I'm not solid on that, but that's just my two cents.
And I have a question for Carla. So we're doing all this work. On our every kind of plan we have.
Mm hmm.
And so now now we're proposing another master plan. Are they? Is this information going to coincide or are they totally different? Because it just seems to me like that I'm working really hard on the co- I'm not, but you are really hard on the code. And things like that that will have. Should be brought forward in this master plan. So am I? Am I gonna get enough if he would convince us that that master plan would be what we need?
Yeah.
Am I doing redundant work?
I I um again, my apologies. I was not at the last meeting, so I was not there for that discussion, so. I'm a little behind. I talked to Nathan, but but we talked more about the the other piece, the AI piece and some other stuff. We did not talk about this master planning effort, so I'm I'm not fully versed, Karen, and I'm I'm my my apologies for that. Um.
You'll find out next week.
I I I will find out next week and and I I don't wanna duplicate efforts. I don't wanna duplicate.
No, I.
So so if 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 the conversation goes down a path. At next week's meeting and I'm going, uh uh, we're already doing that. Then I'm gonna say timeout. We're already doing that. We have that programmed.
Okay.
Or what you're proposing is a really good idea, but here's where Oregon land use and current statute or rulemaking is get away in the way for that. So I I'll have that conversation with Nathan and I will have that conversation with the committee. So. I'm not on the committee. I'm there as staff providing additional support.
Yeah.
Um, I don't wanna duplicate efforts because there's no reason to spend, you know. Fifty thousand dollars out of this fund and then spend another fifty or a hundred thousand dollars out of this fund when. We can save this money, the money we're talking about and deploy it in a more effective way, based on other work we're already doing or gonna do.
Okay.
So.
And if I could just make a suggestion to like. So we can keep going and end it. Now, um, if we if maybe it would be best just now, like they just come to you. Like, let let's get used to the process. Anything they ask, even this one that's coming up, they just come to you and they'll just wait till August. I don't think that would be that big of a deal.
Then we could always change it after.
Exactly.
If we decide that we changed our minds.
Correct. So, yeah, just let the process go, come up with the ideas. Maybe the planning thing's not even gonna come to fruition anyway.
So do we need to make a motion?
I would think so.
Well.
I think it's still consensus.
But.
Oh, consensus.
Did you ask the committee to be involved for three years? Or five years? I guess that. Do you know how, do you know, it's it's July already? I mean, we're half a year over. We've done nothing.
We haven't talked about.
Well.
Committee and a million dollars.
That took us thirty minutes.
I.
Longer than this.
It took a lot longer than that.
Minutes.
This conversation is taking longer than that.
Yeah.
Williams, my my comment about how government moves really slowly is what we're talking about.
But I mean.
Do we wanna have the ability to move faster than a turtle or?
And I think you just let.
You know.
But again, that's my suggestion. Just let it go. Come back in August.
And ask for twenty thousand?
Or and maybe might.
There may be more because we've decided someone else. So what was the consensus? Just add to your.
I don't know that we have a consensus.
The consensus was I I thought for them to bring everything. Well, into the council.
Right now.
Right now.
Change it later.
Yep. And we can always change your mind later.
Fantastic.
That's a.
Sweet. Cool. Or uh, so with. We had an executive session tonight, so with time crunch, we're gonna skip the rest of the. Reports and go down to city management report real quick.
I have one. I have one um timing question for them.
Oh, yes, for a meeting.
So um.
We're gonna go to planning first.
I see that we have a county commission here. I am working with. Tara Mabbett, the county planning director. For the TSP process for the adoption of the transportation system plan. Um, because it is also applicable in the urban growth boundary. Uh, it has to also be a co-adopted by the county. And for co-adoption, just like for us, it has to go to the planning commission and to the council. At the county, it has to go to the planning commission and the board of commissioners. Um, there is scoped in that a joint city-county. Planning commission, elected bodies, joint work session. Cameron and I are trying to identify the right date and time, and so my question, yeah, right, four bodies. I don't know how many total people, and I don't need a quorum. I just need some of you to come. My question is, is do do several of you have availability on Tuesday, August twenty sixth? That is the week school starts. From five to six thirty and it will be here in Boardman. I believe that we.
I do.
I do.
Okay. I've heard enough I do's that I think I'm comfortable with moving moving forward. Um, planning commission was was available as well. So um at this point in time, we've got three out of three. We'll just see what she finds out from the board of commissioners.
We said what kind probably?
Well, uh, August twenty sixth from five to six thirty. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Cool. Alright, now we're going to.
Okay, here we are, chicken ordinance. I'm gonna lay it on thick, chicken on a day. So. We have, you have it in your package. The uh Carla has written this out. Um, it is very simple. And there is very little that the city is going to do to monitor it. So. We're asking for how many chickens, like six?
So we've said six?
Six, yeah, that can be adjusted, whatever, a number of chickens, no roosters. You have to have a run and a coop. And those dimensions are laid out there.
Yep.
If you have a loose chicken, go catch it. Um, or the dog or something. We are not chasing chickens. The only thing that we are going to follow up on is the nuisance of odor.
Uh, right, so we've identified um that noticeable odors will be found to be a nuisance.
Yes.
And what's the criminal?
Or.
Um. What the what the criminal fine for being a nuisance?
So the code is not real clear on that, and that's also a process we're working on.
But again, it would, it's not gonna go, I mean, we'll do the ticket and work with them and just the same thing we do with any other.
I think if you set it really high, nobody will.
Get taken?
No, nobody will want, they'll take care of their animals.
Yeah.
You set it for ten bucks. What are they gonna care?
Yeah, no, and and the enforcement's always been tricky with. You know, taking it to the court and how how they're.
And and are we gonna? Are we gonna be involved if? Are we gonna be involved if a neighbor's dog comes and kills them all? Cause that's, that's process.
That sounds like.
I mean, my, my grandma had a farm and she lived in the county and.
That's, that was my question.
Came down the street, killed all her animals and she shot the dog. And she got to.
Correct, and that would be litigation, that the, the landowners would go between themselves. No, and I, and I wish chief would be a little more vocal because I was hoping Jose would send.
He was on our. That is not gonna be the case.
So, so, so I know Jose, our la- Jose Fernandez, our last code is not in favor of it because of the, what it opens up. But again, it is totally on you guys to like, there you go.
My, my only concern is, is all the animals that will come after the chickens, there's a lot of them, but people don't really realize we'll kill chickens. And then it'll be.
And how close they already live to your couch. And how close those predators, chicken predators, already live to your home.
And now they're gonna be at your home.
There, there, there are already a lot of chickens in town. Um there's a few uh at large roosters. Um, you know, at this point in time, the enforcement is not an easy task. Um cause we really have nothing to go by other than they're not allowed. But it's, again, it's really hard to, I mean, we can tell, tell someone how to get rid of your chickens. At this point in time, we're just kind of riding, waiting to see what happens with this. You guys do this, then we can just say, okay, chickens are now allowed, you can't have more than six. We'll make this information known, you guys pull the plug and say no, then then we'll do a. More specific job of enforcing and telling people they have to get rid of their chickens, but there, there are chickens in town. And a lot of them.
Well, and I think Hurston not that long ago had to deal with a big issue there because they were raising fighting chickens. And it was in town.
Hey, I mean, and that's.
I'm just saying, like, it's gonna be, my only concern is, I'm not against chickens, but my concern is, is. The rodents that are gonna come into people's property to get them, because they will, and two, illegal fighting chickens. Cause that does happen here.
Yeah, they very, they busted a, a chicken.
I just talked to a lady today that got busted for it. Yep, she, I literally saw her today, so that was the reason why I bring it up.
I'm not, I got nothing to say about that.
Um, my question's, I guess, for Chief here, but say somebody didn't do what Richard just described. What does the city have to enforce that under the law, not just under city ordinance?
Well, as, as far as them going and shooting the, the dog.
Not even getting that far, just a dog going, killing other chicks.
Well, that, 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 that is getting into a civil issue, uh very much so, um. Uh but if they start shooting the animal, it really brings a, a huge issue because you can't discharge a firearm in city limits legally. Um but you have a right to protect your lifestyle, your animals.
It's not any different than your dog, it happened to me, my little dog got it in the neighbor's yard and their dog killed her. What do you do? Dogs are gonna be dogs.
Well, that's, that's your dog getting into their yard.
Well, that's what I'm saying, what if our chick, what if my chickens get out of my yard or get in, and get in there or if their dog gets in my, my yard, it's still.
That, that's where I was more questioning, is now it's somebody else's problem becoming your problem, like your problem becomes somebody else's.
But it is incumbent upon the chicken owner to have the structures to safeguard.
But if we're very loosely monitoring, that is what it sounded like, then, then it's uh. I think it becomes a city problem and we will have people here. Pointing their fingers at it.
I don't, I, when we first talked about chickens, there was supposed to be some setbacks, some houses. Stuff like that, it was all kind of in this whole thing.
And, and there are, and there are, right?
Yeah, there's some, there's some.
I mean, that's the basic building type.
Right, so.
And you have daily chicken run and you're building.
But the one thing it did say was that the chicken coop could be eight and a half feet tall or eight feet tall. When our highest fence can be six and I'm not so sure that I want my neighbor. To have two feet more of his chicken coop above my fence, you know. I assume that they will. Okay, here's what I don't know about chickens, if they roost in this pen or, or whatever, are they gonna make roost? Those, you know, wooden things so they can roost up high? See, I'm making this difficult.
I thought you wanted chickens, Karen.
Well, that was when eggs were eight dollars, that's not a reasonable price now.
Well, I mean, and who knows?
They usually put the brooding part, the part where they go in and lay at a.
As certain height?
Right.
Well, because.
Cause chickens don't.
Owner doesn't wanna climb up there either.
Right, the owner doesn't wanna climb, but the chickens, most chickens that you get to lay eggs, you clip their wings. So they don't fly. They, they kind of attempt, but they don't achieve it. So they're not gonna be at eight feet. And, and we debated six feet, seven feet, eight feet, and we landed on eight feet, eight feet could be six feet. Part of the reason for eight feet is that there's in kind of a roof, if you want a, a door you can walk in that is at people height. You kinda have to get to something over six feet.
Where we want them to clean that.
And you want them to clean it, absolutely, so I mean, we, we bandied that around, the, you know, ignore the chicken pun there.
Okay, so are we supposed to vote on this tonight?
No, no, it's just a, you know, are we moving forward with it, are we gonna do chickens?
Yeah, I, my thought is that we're gonna do chickens, go do chickens, if we're not. Everybody needs to lose their chickens, not just. This, not, not enforcing it and then people, well, they have chickens and. If it's gonna be no, then it's a no.
And part of the reason we're kinda sitting on the fence is kind of waiting for this kind of discussion to conclude. You guys pull the plug and say chickens, no, then we will enforce and we will work to get people to get rid of their chickens.
I have another question, it turns out. Um, I'm wondering if we're going to go back to the people who currently have chickens and ensure that they have. Chicken run and chicken coop.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
So you can work with chickens, but you're gonna have to upgrade your.
At the point in time you guys adopt this and this becomes effective, we will, we will make sure it is well reported in the Northmore Times and. You know, post flyers and.
And then any conversations about nuisances.
Right, we'll have a flyer and.
Is this the condition of your chicken area?
Public enforcement officer will be providing that information and. All right, but again, we're not proposing like we, like we license dogs. We've initially started with licensed chickens, we're not proposing that we would license chickens.
Thank you, that's even more redundant.
And then have you, I'm just curious, so no one's really, no, that's what I want. But there's no, uh your gut discussion with, you know, this was posted, chicken ordinance?
Well, I think it's because they're already doing it.
Yes.
And it could, I mean, are you hearing anything where people?
I, I would, yes, yes, I would, I would say, I would say that I was at. His hardware the other day and I won't name names, but say they're already building a chicken coop in, in HOA area.
I would, I would ask.
HOA, that's even, how many, how many fires have you had on chicken coops in town?
So that was my curiosity, well, technically only a couple, but. Like, that, that was my curiosity with the setup, I was, you need to be away from the house, I mean, knowing, do a building inspection like. A garbage can has to be so far away from the building, right, like you can't have. Heat lamps and everything else running constantly right next to your house, it just asked me for disaster. Don't get me wrong, I like doing my job, but I like community as well, so.
Yeah, so it's currently defined to be setback at least three feet from any building on the property and five feet from all neighboring property lines. So it wouldn't be adjacent to a fence, it wouldn't be adjacent to the house, it wouldn't be adjacent to, there is some separation from structures.
I, I really love the idea of chickens. At the end of it, I, I, I'm.
Cause you got all own it. They, they, hey, we are, my job is to support what the council decides, that is my job.
I, I am more leaning towards not having chickens in the city limits if you know where, go to the county and. Get some land for a chicken coop, do what you want. That's my.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and make a motion to approve chicken coops in the city of Boardman.
Yeah, motion is second, I'll pick a, uh by name. Roll call, roll call, thank you.
Well, look, Mr. Keeper got online.
So are you expecting me to say yay or nay?
Well, you're up first.
I, I, I just loved listening to the, to the conversation, uh it's really kinda goofy being over in the Pacific Ocean. Uh but, but anyway. When I saw this, so uh, I'm gonna say, yes, we've already gone down the road. And if we say no, that's not what the vote is, I say yes.
Counselor Pettigrew?
No.
Counselor Prophet?
Yes.
Um, counselor? Quavis?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm doing this on the fly, um, counselor Rockwell?
No.
Thank you, counselor Bonberner? Counselor Salata?
No.
Otis, four to three.
In favor, yeah.
So we'll, we'll bring the adopting ordinance back next, next month.
The government.
Any propose, I mean, the, the eight feet versus six feet came up, we're gonna stick with eight feet.
On height?
For height, unless we hear something really different between now and then, but we'll just present it as proposed.
My, my only concern was enforcement. I just, I don't see people being very responsible, that's all. I see how many dogs are and cats are posted every single day, lost and running around town, it's like, what are they gonna do when they gotta deal with chickens? Those aren't the same kind of chickens, the.
Let's bring this back in here, all right, so. Uh, city manager has nothing else for the time being. Counselor comments?
I have one comment, and so it goes back to uh my questions about how we. Divvy money up to other entities, so like the chamber, okay, so you brought up a good comment about. When they brought their proposal and how we're spending their money, but originally what we were told before we approved the budget, it was just tourism. And then that's it, that's all we were told, okay, so if I sign a contract with somebody, say like a builder. They're coming to do work in my house, I get a breakdown of how my money's being spent and what it's being spent on. We're using public dollars, giving it to an entity and all we got was tourism. I'm just saying. We're not being very responsible when we just throw money, you know, we just had a discussion about housing. And saying, well, they need to come to us and ask for money and do this, this and this, and, but then we allowed tourism. And then that's it, very vague, I mean, if I was a business owner and I just turned over some money to somebody and they just told me that, I'd be like, no, sorry. I need a breakdown first, that's all I'm saying, we're using public dollars for tourism. What does that tourism entail? Because the report I got didn't show me anything about tourism, it was just a report. To me, tourism, I already spent it on advertising. Are we having meetings about in- increasing tourism in town, are we, you know, just, just any little thing? That's all I'm getting at, and it's not that I question their judgment, but. We're using public dollars and we're just giving a hundred thousand plus away all of the sudden and. What are we getting for it? And that's what I've been asking this whole time and I feel like I haven't fully gotten that response yet. As far as what is exactly, what are we, what are we getting for our money? I don't see any signs about Boardman anywhere, I, I'm up and down the freeway all the time. Is it online? Well, if it's online, that's free, I can post something for free all the time. Is it a packet somewhere? Okay, where's it going? Are we paying for employees? We need to know that, that's all I'm saying, so that's my only comment about that.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Anything other comments?
Um, I just wanted to comment um, um with regards to the cooling stations and the misty. Um, I, when I've gone to the Marina Park, um I know I've said this before. But I do think that there's a lot of people that do not have A C and they will go to the Marina Park um as a place to cool down where there's some shade. Um and I've seen families where they're, you know, stripping down the kids as, as little as possible and, and sitting in the shade. Um for that reason, so I do think it is a need in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? Happy Fourth of July.
Thanks and safe.
Stay, stay, stay in Fourth of July, don't blow your hands off. Once again, we love our jobs, but you don't blow your hands off. Other than that, thank you very much, uh we do have executive session, so. We'll be over nine o'clock, so. Uh, the Board of the City Council now meeting the executive session, mayor did.
He has a comment?
Go ahead and start here.
Oh, am I, Paul, do you have a mayor comment, sorry?
No, that's okay, uh I'm, no, I do not have any comments, other than sorry I get to miss your executive session.
Thank you, Chris. Um, okay, so executive session, Board of the City Council will not meet in the executive session pursuant to. Dot six, six, zero parentheses two, parentheses B. Uh which allows city council to meet an executive session to consider real estate. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend an executive session in person. Representatives of the news media are especially specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclosing. Any of the deliberations or anything said about the subject during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previous, previously announced. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during executive session as permissible. Executive session meetings are not subject to House Bill twenty five sixty. Uh, no discussion may be made in the executive session, executive session is expected for less than thirty minutes. And action is planned afterward, we either do in the council.
No decision.
Know what I said, sorry.
Set us discussion.
Oh, sorry, notice it, notice it, there will be discussion. All right, tonight, uh, city council meeting is gonna be resumed. Um, is there any action needed from our session?
I moved to operate city manager panel to proceed with necessary steps, this being the sale of property described as four and twenty five E twelve, lot four hundred.
I stuck it up.
Two seconds.
Who, who did I hear first?
Whoever wants to say anything. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors to that. All of the toes. Were none, much forward, this meeting is now here.